Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Vaskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The list of legislation to be presented by Pittsburgh City Council can be found on the Pittsburgh City Council website at www.pittsburghpa.gov and you will select City Council, City Clerk's Office, Meeting Agenda. That is where you will find all the legislation to be introduced today by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Laval.
Here.
George Connor.
There.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join together from our remote locations, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain silent for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm just going to interrupt the moment of silence very quickly. I think that Councilman Coghill had a moment of silence for someone in his district who passed away recently, served on City Council. Councilman Coghill?
You're muted, Councilman.
Okay, sorry.
I apologize.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Michael Diven passed away. He was 50 years old. He had three children, ages nine to 13. Served in my council seat and also as a state representative. And it was a big loss to Brookline and the entire South Hills. He was very well, very well respected, very well liked. So, thank you. And with that, yeah, I would appreciate silence. It'd be great.
Thank you. A moment of silence in honor of former Councilman Michael Diven and State Representative Michael Diven. Okay. And we'd like to offer our condolences from City Council as well. And our next order of business is the proclamations. And we have some to be read into the record. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Kelsmith presents Bill Number 648. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby declare Saturday, August 29th, 2020, to be Jubilee of Freeman Parade Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 652. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby declare Wednesday, August 25th, 2020, to be Ken Phelps Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve brief discussion?
Motion to second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Thank you. So, I'm not sure how many members had the opportunity to read the story about Ken Phelps, but I came across this about 10 days or so ago. And even though he is not in the Pittsburgh area, I felt compelled to recognize the courage of this man. At 90 years old, he came out to himself and to his family and declared that who he has been all of his entire life is gay and that it took him to the age of 90 to feel comfortable enough within himself to actually come out and be who he is. And I, it was such an endearing and touching story that someone would feel so confined and restricted to spend their entire life denying who they are. He had served in the Navy honorably. He had met someone in the Navy. He had fallen in love and tried to build a life with this man, but other pressures came in and he thought it better to stuff that deep inside him and deny who he was until the age of 90. And when he came out and started on the journey to find this man that he had met in the Navy and to actually build a relationship with him that late in life. And so, I just, I was just felt compelled to share that story with council and the public at large that those days, thank God, are slowly going behind us and that, you know, that we have a generation coming up now that does not feel compelled to lie and deny who they really are, but to accept themselves for who and what God created them to be and to live their lives to their highest purpose and order. And so, with that, I just wanted to share that story with the council members and with Pittsburgh at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Great words. Any other members? No other members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the opposed? Proclamation is approved. And then we have one proclamation for myself. The Jubilee Parade?
Oh, we did that.
Did we read them? Okay, I apologize. Okay, so they're both approved then? Okay. And then now we have a wills of council. We have two wills of council. We have one from Councilman Coghill and myself regarding the post office. Councilman, Madam Clerk, and then Councilman Coghill will turn over to you.
Okay, do you want them read in their entirety or you just want me to read the last sentence?
I want you to read the last sentence, but it's up to Councilman Coghill.
The last sentence, good. That's good.
Council President Teresa Kelsmith and Councilman Coghill presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh calls upon President Trump to end his fault on our free and fair elections, remove Louis DeJoy by reinstating Meghan Brennan, and return the phone call of Senator Casey to explain in detail the changes at the United States Postal Service.
Thank you. And we have a, you heard the reading. Is there a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Coghill?
I just wanted to say thank you to you, Madam President, for spawning that will, council. And I also wanted to thank Blake, my Chief of Staff. He did a really good job. He's got fantastic writing skills.
Yeah, I want to say thank you to Blake as well. But any other members before I start talking? I can't see. So if there's somebody wants to speak, just jump in. No other members? Okay, I just want to say thank you to you and to your office for us being able to work together on this issue and for sharing this concern. And I do want to say that, you know, I, when it comes to the post office, it's, to me, it's really shaking the core of America when you're taking away something that has hired veterans, has hired minorities, has hired women. They, they are what America has been in many ways and have delivered so many things, as we all know, that of importance. And I don't think there's anything more important right now than this election coming up. So I want to thank you and I want to say that, you know, we support the postal workers. And if there's anything council can do as a whole, we'd love to be able to do that. And this was one of our ways to show our support for those workers. So we have a motion in a second. Oh, and we voted already, right? We voted for this one? Do we vote for this one?
Not yet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will of councils approved. And now we have a second will of councils sponsored by Councilman Wilson and myself. The support for the Post Gazette workers.
You want it read in full or just the last paragraph?
It's up to Councilman Wilson.
The last paragraph. And I did have all members on as cosponsors as well.
Oh, did you? Okay, good.
Councilman Bobby Wilson and Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby urges Block Communications, Inc., the Newspaper Guild of Pittsburgh, and all other labor unions representing employees of the Pittsburgh Post Gazette to resume negotiations immediately in order to resolve the current impasse without resorting to unilaterally imposed conditions of employment or a potentially fatal work stoppage.
Okay. And can we have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Yes, second.
And a discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank you, Madam President, for working with me on this. And I wanted to say that this is very important that all parties go back to the table. It's imperative that they do. We're a major city and with a major newspaper, you know, during these times when we need the most transparency and also coverage for the public, especially how they cover council. I think it's important that, you know, there is something that's worked out so we can continue to see Post Gazette continue.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Any other members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure some members would remember. Some may not have been around at the time, but this was exactly how we lost the Pittsburgh press with a, with a a management team that thought repression of workers was the way to go. And it cost us the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, or I'm sorry, the Pittsburgh Press, which made then our second newspaper, the Pittsburgh Post Gazette, the paper of record. And now we see that this paper is clearly in danger because of management. And it's, it is a travesty in a world today where, you know, I spoke with someone at the Post Gazette yesterday, but I'll leave that out for the sake of anonymity. But I said that I remember a world where Walter Conkite was the most trusted man in America and that you knew what was coming out of the CBS Evening News. You knew that you could, you could rely on and you could trust. And journalism has been traded for media. And there is not a more important time in the history of this nation that journalism, true authentic reporting, needs to have an avenue to express itself. And the thought of losing the only major newspaper that we have here in the, in the City of Pittsburgh, the second largest city in the state of Pennsylvania, is a travesty that I just can't imagine. So I implore everyone to let common sense come to the surface and to sit down and to negotiate this and not to risk the loss of our major newspaper in the second largest city in the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? No other members? And so I just want to thank you, Councilman Wilson, and your staff, Mohammed, who wrote this will of council as well. You have such talent in both your offices. I just want to thank them both for helping us with these. But I do want to say that, you know, the Post Gazette, as we all know, is so vitally important. And the more I'm seeing, you know, some of the online media that's covered and paid for by foundation communities, that's paid for by private, it makes you concerned that a lot of the funding is coming from one stream and it makes you concerned that some of the, we're not getting the full story. And I think that the integrity of the employees, the Post Gazette, really try their best to get out their real stories and real details that the public really needs to know as best they can with editors. And I think it's a challenging time even for editors right now. So I just want to say that I, we appreciate the Post Gazette. I can't believe that there'll be a day that we don't have a Post Gazette or a paper, hard copy paper in the City of Pittsburgh. I just want to say that we offer our support to the Post Gazette employees and that if there's anything we can do as a council in addition to the will of council, please let us know. That's it. We have a motion to approve in a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Will of councils approved. And now we'll move on to our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that the comments are limited to matters of concern and official action or deliberations, which are or may be before City Council. Well, maybe we have the first speaker, please. And the first speaker I have is David Demko. David?
Yes. Hello, Council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, morning, David.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I'm David Demko. I'm the Assistant Director of Scenic Pittsburgh, non-profit organization dedicated to protecting and promoting the scenic assets of the Pittsburgh region. I live here on the north side and I'm pretty sure all of you know me. I've been lurking the halls of the city county buildings since Tom Murphy was mayor. So I've been around for a while, working on various projects. I'm grateful that I and my family are well and I'm happy to see everybody here. I'm hoping that the COVID-19 epidemic hasn't touched you personally. I'm grateful that we're, be here and conduct our business more or less as usual. That said, this COVID-19 epidemic has been a disaster. And at this point, it's an unmitigated disaster. It looks like we're going to be living in a COVID infection, infectious environment well into next year. Yet, we must endeavor to persevere on our personal missions. I'm privileged to have this job as, with Scenic Pittsburgh. It has allowed me to dig deeply into the issues of scenic beauty and of blight. My goal is to share some of what I've learned over the past 10 years regarding those issues. So my, my plan is to be here every week and speak my three minutes and share with you some of the information about the importance of scenic beauty and negativity that blight causes. Scenic Pittsburgh is an advocate for scenic beauty. And to put it in a negative sense, we fight blight. We fight blight anywhere that we see it. One of the questions is, what is blight? Blight is a broad, a broad category. And like one of the justices of Supreme Court says, "I know it when I see it." And we all know it when we see it. Light is not distributed equally. Disadvantaged neighborhoods get more than their fair share of light. If you don't believe me, we can go to Shady Side or Squirrel Hill and we can look for some blight and we'll have a lot of trouble finding it. So what do we know about blight? And we all know this, that blight contributes to disinvestment. And then disinvestment contributes to more blight. And blight contributes to disinvestment and round and round the cycle goes as the neighborhood goes down the drain. Studies show that communities that have blighted assets are less safe and have more crime. And I can send you these studies if you're interested in it, but these were studies done by Penn State. Vacant and blighted properties make people less safe, feel less safe, and less proud of their neighborhoods. And blighted neighborhoods have poor health outcomes and greater morbidity. Now, is there a causality between blight and morbidity and lower health outcomes? I don't know, but there certainly is a correlation. Let me finally leave you with the words that Lady Bird Johnson wrote regarding scenic beauty. She was in-
Thank you, David. Have a good day. Akahana Hell McKenna? Next speaker?
Yes, I can hear you. Okay. Greetings. I greet each of you in the spirit of my ancestors who fought fearlessly to protect our land, our people, and to keep our culture intact. I would like to speak about the URA's attempt at overstepping their boundaries and would like to express our concerns about the misuse of our land, indigenous land. We have a voice and must approve any distribution of our land. Without our free and informed and prior consent, nothing the URA will do will be lawful. Let that be on the record for time immemorial. As set forth in the Northwest Ordinance of 1787, which reads in Article III, "Ner religion, morality, and knowledge in a necessity to good government and to the happiness of mankind. Schools and the means of education shall forever be encouraged. The utmost good faith shall always be observed towards the Indians. Our lands, our property, shall never be taken from us without our consent. And in property rights and our liberty, that we shall never be invaded or disturbed." And it is those words that shall resonate throughout City Council and beyond. For when the indigenous people of America that also are in our land today, we are still here and let the record reflect that. I'd also like to speak too that we are also against the facial recognition software that is being proposed by the City of Pittsburgh and supported by City Council. We are in direct opposition of the facial recognition software as our nation is already under heavy surveillance to include by the NSA, which violates the people's rights. The right to their privacy at an alarming rate is being misused. And just a few weeks ago, we heard from testimony from someone at CMU who has direct knowledge of how this software will be utilized. And she herself wrote out again. The city has already used invasive technologies at the taxpayers' expense, such as shot slaughter. That is only a reactionary tool and does not aid in the resolution of solving any crimes or prevention. It is only a reactionary tool. So we urge City Council to stand out and speak out against such technologies being used against the American people.
Thank you. Having no further registered speaker, our next order of business is presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Burgess presents, Councilman Reverend Burgess presents, Bill Number 621, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operation of its senior community centers. Said agreement shall be for a term of one year at no cost to the city with compensation to the city not to exceed $783,450. Bill Number 622, Resolution Authorizing the issue under a warrant in favor of DHS OCR Keys Service Corp. in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for the payment of the 2019 Americorps Keys Summer Program, which provides funding for hosting 17 youth to participate in the Department of Parks and Recreation Educational Program and jobs training for the summer. The Americorps members who participated in this program worked alongside City Parks staff to support the multi-site summer camps and providing for the payment thereof. Bill Number 623, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the National Recreation and Park Association to provide emergency funding relief for costs incurred by the city's summer food program due to the coronavirus and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $10,000.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President?
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents, Bill Number 624, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a license and maintenance agreement in which the city grants to Walnut Capital a right to plant and maintain landscape improvements upon city property along Bakery Square Boulevard in Mellon Park. Bill Number 625, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging Senior Community Center Grant to make improvements at the Hazelwood Healthy Active Living Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $65,000. Bill Number 626, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging's Senior Community Center Grant to make improvements at Sheridan Healthy Active Living Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $45,000. Bill Number 627, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging's Senior Community Center Grant to make improvements at the South Side Market House Active Living Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $51,000. Bill Number 628, Resolution Granting unto the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use of their own cost and expense a new projecting sign at 612 Smithfield Street in the 2nd Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 629, Resolution Granting unto Renewal, Inc., their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use of their own cost and expense a new exhaust flue that will project into the right-of-way at 329 Boulevard of the Allies in the 1st Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 630, Resolution Granting unto Smith Brothers Boggs LP, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use of their own cost and expense three new canopy-covered awnings on the existing building at 120 Federal Street in the 22nd Ward, 1st Council District. Bill Number 631, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of PN Avenue Reconstruction Phase II Project and providing for the payment of the municipal incurred costs not to exceed $825,000 federally reimbursable at 80% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $10,000. Bill Number 632, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 744 of 1996, entitled, "The Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Shade Tree Trust Fund for the Deposit of Cash and Contributions and Authorize the Use of the Funds Deposited herein by the Department of Public Works for any and all expenses associated with the operation and implementation of projects related to the planting and promotion of trees in the city to provide the Director of the Office of Management and Budget with authority to direct certain proceeds of the Shade Tree Trust Fund."
Councilman Coghill, Madam President, could, would you indulge me on a waiver of the rules for Bill 628, which is the projecting sign for the Carnegie Library on Smithfield Street? We're doing renovations at the, at that library. And this is very simple, non-controversial. If we could help to expedite, I'd greatly appreciate if offering up a motion to waive the rules on 628 so that we could have it on tomorrow's standing committee agenda.
And I'll defer to Councilman Coghill since it's his committee. Councilman?
Absolutely. Motion, waive the rules on Bill Number 628.
Thank you. And I'll second it.
Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
You'll appear tomorrow. Thank you. And now we have Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Councilwoman Gross presents, Bill Number 633, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into a Agreement with Allegheny Cleanways to Grant a License to Allegheny Cleanways to Enter unto certain city-owned parcels in order to perform certain work, including assessment and removal of litter and illegal dumping. This agreement will also allow access to certain Department of Public Works Division facilities by Allegheny Cleanways for disposal of collected litter and illegal dumping. Bill Number 634, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at 316 South Highland Avenue. Bill Number 635, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 1501 PN Avenue. Bill Number 636, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Sweet Briar Houses at 450 through 454 Sweet Briar Street. for Sweet Briar Houses at 450 through 454 Sweet Briar Street.
Thank you. And I can't wait for next week's agenda. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman LaBelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Morning.
Councilman LaBelle presents Bill Number 637, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020 to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for fourteen days, thereby making the declaration effective until September 8, 2020, in response to the ongoing public health and emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 638, Coordinates Amendment to City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title II Fiscal Article I Administration, Chapter 219, Operating Budget Collaborative Budgeting Process. Bill Number 639, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the Issu One of a Warrant to Copperpreneur LLC for the sponsorship of events related to the small business engagement and education. Bill Number 640, Resolution Authorizing the Issu One of a Warrant in favor of Brenda Richmond Administratives of the Estate of Christopher M. Thompson in an amount of $13,000 relating to the full and final settlement of litigation in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 641, Resolution, Amending Resolution 431, Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Cosell, Yocitis, and Baradonelli Coppers Building for professional legal services regarding ethics matters by increasing the total cost $15,000 from $30,000 to $45,000.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes.
Yeah, motion to waive the rules of council so Bill 637 can appear under final action today.
Second.
Thank you. Motion second. Any discussion? Will the ball in favor?
Aye.
The bill will be on the end of our agenda today. Thank you, Councilman. And now we have Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 642, Resolution Providing for the Issu One of a Warrant in favor of Skalon Fiber Optics LLC in an amount of $29,950.86 for the installation of in-car camera access points for the Department of Public Safety and the Bureau of Police. Bill Number 643, Resolution Authorizing the City's Department of Public Safety to purchase hazardous material emergency response equipment from Midland Manufacturing Corporation at a cost not to exceed $13,801.86. Bill Number 647, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title I Administrative Article III Organization Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety to regulate the use of facial recognition and predictive policing technology.
Councilwoman Strasburg, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 644, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Plight Remediation Program to study city-owned vacant lots in the Homewood neighborhood. The grant proposal asks include $25,000 with a local match of $22,500 to come out of the city's 2020 operating budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $27,500. Bill Number 645, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Shrine of the Blessed Mother located at Wakefield Street in South Oakland in the Fourth Ward of the city. Bill Number 646, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the John P. Robbins Civic Building located at 200 Ross Street in downtown First Ward in the city.
Madam President and Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Since we, since we have such a heavy agenda for next Wednesday, can I ask for your indulgence also on Bill, forgive me, I just had it here, Bill 645, to waive the rules so that we can take care of this on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. We simply need to call for it to be held for public hearing. So a motion to waive the rules if you'll agree, Councilman Wilson, on Bill 645.
Certainly. I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion second. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilmen. And then I, myself, Chair of Hearings, I have, we have eight appointments. Madam Clerk.
Council President.
President, I'm sorry. Can, can we take the reappointments of our clerk and deputy clerk separately, please?
We're taking them all separate.
Oh, great.
The appointments, the appointments first.
Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 650, Resolution Authorizing the Reappointment of Brenda F. Prey as City Clerk of the City of Pittsburgh for a three-year term to expire April 4, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'll jump in. I'll jump in quickly. We, you know, you know, our clerk's office, i- 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 is the glue that keeps council together.
These are the appointments.
Yes.
But they're under the reappointment. Next, they're coming up next.
Oh, I'm, didn't we just take Brenda? Yes.
Did we take Brenda?
Yeah, we just read Brenda. We did.
Sheet, okay.
Oh, you know what? Fire the clerk.
No, not her, not her.
No, the clerk's office is the glue that keeps council together. And we are so lucky and so privileged, you know, after the rich history that the clerk's office has had for generations, that we have been able to continue that, that legacy through Brenda and Kim and amazing leadership that takes place within our, our clerk's department and all of the clerk's staff who work so very diligently and tirelessly to manage sometimes nine straight cats, but they do it with a smile and, and a willingness and a professionalism that speaks volumes about, about who they are. So it is with great pleasure that I would nominate or I would support and call for the reappointment of Brenda Prey as our city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other members?
Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilman Kraus's sentiments. I couldn't agree more. Brenda and your entire staff has really been great from the time I started, just kind of walking me through everything. And I enthusiastic, enthusiastically, you know, will support your stage because we need you, so. And again, the entire staff has been fantastic since day one, so.
Thank you. Any other members? No other members? So, and do we have Kim Clark on here as well?
Yes, yes, but it hasn't been read, Madam President.
Okay, so I just wanted, I want to make sure that I talk about both of them, but I will just say, Madam Clerk, when you first came in, you know that I, I had a lot of issues of things that were happening. And you, the way you have worked with Kim meant a lot to me. And I just want to say that I'm really thrilled how you brought this whole staff together, the leadership that you bring to the table, and the way that you work with all of the members and your staff has been just really amazing, especially lately. I get to see a lot more behind what you do. And it's just, I know I personally could not do this without you. And I know that a lot of us could not do the things that we do without the entire clerk's office. And I just want to thank all the clerk's staff and you and your staff. But I really want to say you have really amazed me of how, how much you brought to the table for your staff and how much you brought everyone together. And as I mentioned, to me, it was really important how Kim felt. And I see that she, she is one of your biggest advocates now. So, I mean, to me, that's important. So that's it. I just want to thank you for your leadership and thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you.
Thrilled to support it. Okay, and any, we have any discussion or anything else? Now, for these other, for the appointments. Did we read the one for the Director of Finance and City Treasurer?
No, we just read one. That was the first one. That was Bill Number 650. So the first one, and we're reading them all. Well, we're reading the reappointments separately, so mine was just read, motion is second, so we just need a vote on Bill 650.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because before I get into these others. Okay, so we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Madam Clerk. Motion's approved. And she's thinking, what did I just do?
No, I'm, I'm happy. I'm enjoying being here. I am.
Yeah, from Zoom.
You know, I wouldn't.
Okay, and then next, the next.
Bill 651, Resolution Authorizing the Reappointment of Kimberly D. Clark Baskin as an Assistant City Clerk of the City for a term year to expire April 4, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Yeah, if I can, please. Kim is this utterly amazing asset to the clerk's office. And what makes, what, what makes the clerk's office work so well is the partnership that Brenda and Kim have, have invested in. And they, they work together so very, very well. You know, Councilwoman Gross and I joke about the terminology of being separated at birth, but I swear Kim and Brenda were separated at birth because they're more like sisters than they are colleagues. And they have really formed an amazing friendship and a bond that benefits all of us in, in the professionalism and the integrity that they bring to the clerk's office. And so it's with enthusiastic support. I could not be happier to, to call for the reappointment of Kim as our Assistant City Clerk and, and encourage all members to vote unanimously in her support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? No other members? And I'm going to say, Kim, when I first came here, I was so nervous because I knew nothing about politics. I still don't really know a lot about politics, but I know a lot about the community. And I just want to say you helped me on the end where, and you were a person who was a trusted person here. And that's really hard in this business because, you know, we don't trust, there's nobody to trust. But you've really done a lot of good things. And I knew that when we told you stuff, it was always in confidence. And, but your leadership and your, and your skills were just always amazing. I was, you know, one of your biggest fans in the beginning, and you know that. And, and I'm so thrilled that you and the clerk are so close and, and work so well together because I've grown to love her and appreciate her as much as I, as I do you. So I just really want to say thank you to both of you. You make an awesome team. Thank you for making us look good even when we really are faltering in a lot of ways. So I want to thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Happy to, to approve. We have a motion, we have a motion to approve and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, opposition? The, the appointment's approved and thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yay.
Yay.
You know, Madam President, can I, can I add something? You know, I think you are, I think you're really growing in the office of the, of the presidency. And, and part of why I say that is that you're, you're seeing the importance of, you're, you're seeing the importance of the clerk's office and how, how in a different way than we might not view the clerk's office if we weren't holding the office of the presidency. And, and they are such an integral component to helping this council to function and being the, the keeper of the record for generations to come that the work that we do, you know, is, is immortalized, is that the word I'm looking for? That, that, you know, generations are able to come and see the work that this council has done and to make sure those, those records are preserved. But when you're sitting in the, in the seat of the presidency, I think it's, you, you view the clerk's office in a completely different capacity. And I see that you see that and understand the importance of the office. So, thank you.
I definitely do. Thank you so much. Thank you. Any other members? Okay, and now the next.
Bill, Bill Number 603, Resolution Appointing Douglas Anderson as the Director of the Department of Finance and City Treasurer.
Motion, motion for interview?
Do we need to interview?
Uh, well, if, may I, just with some comments?
I don't know if members want to interview. I personally am thrilled with the appointment, so.
I am thrilled with the appointment. We'll absolutely approve. I am more than willing to approve today, but asked to come in for interview. And the only reason that I would like to be able to talk with Doug more on the record is that we have such a challenging time ahead of us with COVID and our budget and such a challenging time crafting this coming budget. And I'd just sort of like to have a public dialogue. But I am more than willing to motion to approve today and then ask him if he would not come and interview with the council just to discuss the upcoming responsibility of the budget we're being called to craft this fall.
And any other members?
Madam President.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, yeah, I've known Doug for a long time. He's a great guy. He's very well qualified. He was a huge asset to Michael Lamb and the Controller's Office. And now I think I'm happy. I'm glad we're getting him because he'll, he'll be a big asset to us as well.
Thank you. So do, what's the will? To interview, to hold for an interview or to vote today?
So I will motion to approve today.
Okay, thank you. Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any, any conversation? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion, Doug's approved, appointment's approved. And then Madam Clerk, will you please work with Mr. Anderson and council members to get a, a day where we could do an interview? Or at least impromptu conversation.
Yep, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next man, next bill.
Bill Number 604, Resolution Reappointing Ms. Sabrina Corbo as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion's approved, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any opposed? Abstentions? Appointment approved, reappointment approved. Next one, please, Madam.
Bill 605, Resolution Reappointing Mr. Knowledge Hussin as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? Any, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Appointment's approved. Next bill, please.
Bill 606, Resolution Reappointing Mrs. Lena Andrews as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2024.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? I just want to say that I serve with her and she is just amazing. So I just want to, I'm happy to, to vote for this today. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, any, any abstentions? Reappointment's approved. Madam Clerk?
Bill 607, Resolution Reappointing Mrs. Ethel Johnson as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any, any discussion? And I'll just say I serve with Mrs. Johnson and I'm thrilled. She's also a resident of the West End. I'm happy that this board actually has three members from the West End, so I'm really happy for that. But I'm happy to, she actually serves as a resident, so I'm really thrilled to have her voice on there. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Appointment, reappointment's approved. Next.
Bill 608, Resolution Reappointing Mr. Mark Masterson as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any discussion? I would just say he's one of the fiercest people on that board. That's, I mean, he really knows what he's talking about. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposition? Any opposed? Any abstentions? And it's appointment, reappointment's approved.
Bill Number Six, Bill Number 609. Bill number six, Bill number six oh nine, resolution reappointing Ms. Adrian Wellnoa as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second, I'm sorry, it's, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And I'll just say, Adrian is, is very good at, well, so I just, I'm happy that she's on there as well. Would they really have a really good board, a really good group of people on this board? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, reappointments approved? Next appointment, please.
Bill six ten, resolution reappointing Mrs. Megan Winters as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
In a second? And, okay, any discussion? I'm going to say Megan is also from District Two, and I was actually thrilled to suggest her to the administration who they were also eager to, to accept Ms. Winters. And I'll just say she's, she's a great asset to the, to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Position? Any abstentions, Megan's, Ms. Winters is approved. Next appointment, please.
Bill six eleven, resolution appointing Mr. Oliver Beasley as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Mr. Beasley was served in a seat designated for a representative from the mayor's office.
Motion to approve.
In a second?
Second.
Now, I realize Oliver was going to be on here, so I just have to say, that's another District Two resident. So it sounds like we have a four votes on the housing, well, not really, but we have four members from our area. How's that?
Yeah, that's a better way.
I mean, people at least that are aware of the West End, which is really amazing because we have an abundance of affordable housing in that area that we need to do something with and to, that would benefit the rest of the city, so it's good to have all these voices, so thank you. Any other discussion? And so, motion, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, Mr. Beasley's approved. And Bill zero six twelve?
Bill six twelve, resolution appointing Ms. Deamonte Walker as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, any discussion? I just want to say she's fierce in everything that she does. She's an amazing person and asset to the city. Love her. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? And, and no one opposition, so a motion approved, or appointment approved. Next bill, please.
Bill six thirteen, resolution appointing Mr. James Myers Jr. as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Do we have a motion in a second?
A mo- motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Kraus, did you have discussion?
No, I just, you know, I, there are, there are new appointments to the board. I, I would really like to move ahead with the appointments today, but still keep open our option to invite them in for conversation just to get their ideas and their points of views. One of the things that I like about interview, and we don't have to do everyone, is that it is a good way to get the, the candidates that are on our boards, authorities, and commissions before the electorate so that they can see firsthand who's making decisions for them that clearly impact and affect their lives.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that the new appoint, appointees we should interview, but, but I'm okay with it.
But let's move, yeah.
And having that discussion, but knowing that if we have some issues, the mayor's office would, would work with us to remove or change whatever we need to change.
I think it's important that people see members of boards, authorities, and commissions who are making decisions that affect your day.
I do too. I do too. Nor, under normal circumstances, I would be, I would just say let's hold for interviews. It's just so difficult to even have an interview this way.
Understood, thank you. So motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposite, any opposed? Any abstentions? Appointment approved. Next appointment, please.
Bill six fourteen, resolution appointing Mr. Paul Spragley as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second, second? All in favor? Any opposed, any opposed, any abstent, any abstentions? Appointment approved, next, next, bill, please.
Bill six twenty, resolution reappointing Ms. Kelly Ware Seaborn for a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Motion's approved, second?
Second.
Any opposition, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any, any abstentions? And I'm just going to say, we all know Kelly from working here. We know she's wonderful. The next appointment, please.
Bill six fifteen, resolution appointing Ms. Rosa Maria Cristello as a member of the Board of Directors of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Facility for a term to expire January fifth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, this is an appointment to, I, I actually want to hold this one for an interview.
Yeah, a motion to hold for interview.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to hold for an interview and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the appointment will be held for an interview. Next bill, please.
Bill six sixteen, resolution appointing Mrs. B.J. Lieber as a member of the Board of Directors, Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Facility, Sewer Authority for a term to expire January first, two thousand and twenty-three.
A motion to hold.
Can I just ask, we take all the PWA ones, because I want to hold them all for an interview?
Sure.
We take them all to.
Bill six seventeen, resolution appointing Dr. Andre Merle as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to hold six sixteen and six seventeen for interview.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The appointments will be held for interview, thank you. And next bill, please.
Bill six eighteen, petition from the residents of the city requesting a public hearing before city council relative to a plan by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to install roundabouts on Reynolds Street. If the city council is unable to conduct a public hearing due to the COVID nineteen, we request the project be postponed. Council, and said a live public hearing can be held. The petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
I forget, Madam President, Madam Clerk, I forget the action that's to be taken on a request for public hearing.
I think you, you'll vote, you know, to hold a public hearing or to schedule a public hearing for it.
Motion to hold for public hearing.
Yeah, motion to hold for public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll hope for a, the bill will be held for a public hearing. And we have one communications for the Parks Audit, Parks Conservancy Performance Audit. I wish Councilman Gross was here today.
Bill, Bill six nineteen, communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, submitting performance audit of the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy dated July two thousand and twenty.
Motion to read, receive, and file.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? I'm just going to thank my colleagues for working on this. I think that there's a lot to be learned from this, this audit and our agreements coming, moving forward, and some of the things that, that we see. And I think that there's going to be a lot more discussion coming up about this, but I'm eager to work with our, with our colleagues, with all of you. So thank you, and I thank, I want to thank the Controller's Office for doing an audit during a time that there was a really busy season. So motion to read, receive, and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we'll move on to. Now, now we'll move on to unfinished business.
You got to speak up.
Is there, is there any unfinished business before this council?
Councilman O'Connor is raising his hands.
Sorry, Madam President.
I can't see, I'm sorry.
I just have to call for a post-agenda on Justice Related and Health and Human Services, Department of Human Services. So I just wanted to call for a, a post-agenda on that, a Comcast post-agenda or Zoom post-agenda.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And now we have, the next order of business is Committee for Final Action, Reports Committee for Final Action. And Councilman Lavelle will take your emergency declaration.
Yes, it's Bill six thirty-seven.
Yes.
Bill, Bill six thirty-seven, resolution providing for further renewal by the council of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by council on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for fourteen days, additional thereby making the declaration effective until September eighth, two thousand and twenty, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
A motion to approve it in a second? Are we going to, all, all in favor?
We'll call, I believe, Madam Clerk, right? We need, we need a call for final action.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, Councilman.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President?
Aye.
Aye, seven, no, zero.
The bill have received a required number of votes has finally passed. And now we'll move on to motions and resolutions. And I just have a meeting announcement. Council will meet tomorrow morning at ten AM for their standing committee meetings. Be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. To register to speak, please call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight by nine AM on Wednesday morning. You may also submit written testimony by email to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. That's at city clerks with S, city clerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Again, council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at ten AM and for pub, for public hearings and post-agendas until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. And I just want to say real quickly that we, council members have a briefing with the Public Safety Department and on Thursday to address some of our concerns and to understand the policies and procedures that we would like to address. I think that I've asked this before of council, that we work together, that we look like leaders instead of hero, individual heroes, and that we actually come up with something that's really beneficial to the public. And I just want to reiterate that I really, we have that meeting on Thursday at one thirty will be the first meeting. And I suspect from there, we're going to take some action to go over these things together and, and work together as a body to make some changes. But we'll discuss that further after Thursday, after we, after we actually agreed to it on Thursday or not agree to it. But at least the meeting, the first meeting is scheduled on Thursday. Is there anything from the members? Seeing nothing from the members, we can have a motion to excuse them, the absent member, prove the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned, thank you.